Just like to mention this is a regularly called meeting, scheduled meeting. The date, time, and place has been posted on the building in the MIA, on our website, and also on Utah Public Notice website. We'll go ahead and go through rule call. President Abraham, Councilman Abraham, here. Councilman Wyatt, here. Councilman Barrett, here. Councilman Wade, here. And Councilman Barrett is out of town business, so. We've asked Councilman Wyatt to give us a prayer, and then if everyone would stand and follow me, we'll just.
Our Father in heaven, we are indeed grateful to be here this evening to have this city council meeting, and pray that as we discuss the matters on the agenda, that we may have guidance from thee and be able to make decisions that will benefit prison sparsity the best way possible. We thank thee for those who serve to protect and watch over us and our safety and in our city, and pray that thou bless and be with them, especially our police force and those who were to help those who are injured or otherwise in need. We thank thee for those who have chosen to serve our country, to protect our freedoms, and pray that we may continue to enjoy the great freedoms that have been provided in this beautiful land. We are indeed grateful for being able to live in this part of the world, and pray that we will continue to be blessed, with safety and prosperity. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So to get started, we'll go ahead and take a look at the minutes from the previous meeting. Welcome, Grant.
Thank you.
Are there any changes or amendments to page one, page two, and page three? Seeing men within their kind of amendment motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Labor. Second by Councilman Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any opposed? Motion passes. We do have our public comment period. Anybody in the public can address the council for up to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to take that opportunity? How about you on the end?
Yeah?
All right, seeing men will move forward. Our first item, master site plan for the South Shack. I don't see the code here. Is there anyone to present for her?
I haven't been asked to. It has been approved by planning zoning. It was the condition that was asked for was that they not use the alleyway. They had enough space that they thought a room could be done inside there. Traditionally in the past, if they haven't come, we've led them to a future meeting because then they don't have questions to be able to ask them. So unless you're proceeding with the recommendation of planning zoning, historically we've had them show up before we have them. So that's up to you.
Well, I say we have plenty of other things we can cover. We'll see if they care later on. We'll move on to the next item.
My way of prayer.
We'll move on. The CID final bond resolution. So this is for eight south, and this is what was agreed upon in our CID funding package. And we did preliminarily agree to or the parameter resolution was approved, up to 195. And this is the, this is more the defined exact amount, so.
That's good. It does include eight south, but it also includes various chip cells in northeast as well. So there's about $1.2 million in grant and $160,000 loan. We had to take the loan from that side. They were really pushing for loan, and this was at almost 90% grant. We felt that this was the best option. We don't expect to take more loan than 160. We don't expect to go to the full prime resolution. That is what attorneys do, the bond attorneys tells, but this is the actual authorization of 160. So we've talked about the number of times. We found that this is the final vote, final round.
Are there any questions about the resolution and the amount? John, you're okay with this?
I'm pretty much.
It's a pretty good funding package. No questions?
No questions, no motion? If you're ready for motion.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion from that we approve bond resolution.
And my Councilman Wyatt, second by Councilman Wyatt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, just cruising through personnel policy updates. Do you have a thought on that one? Yes, please.
We have sent out what the policy would be in the package. We are, we have been asked each time anybody retires from the city to define the definitions of this or that. This policy is what we are currently operating under. It hasn't been as written or defined in depth, but it has been asked of us of the Utah retirement system, which is the retirement system we work under. It has been asked that we define it, and so based on their recommendation and requirement, we are establishing in writing further defining our policy on it so that it resolves any question. Then in the future, we can simply provide a public policy. The actual commission is not changed, it's only expounding and defining the policy. So that's what it is. If there's questions about policy, we have to answer them.
Just for the public, if they're interested, this has to do with the retirement system for the employees, and it's basically adopting the policy or if it's to make it match what retirement do, allowing certain employees to exempt and opt out of the retirement, the state provided retirement. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's a standard procedure for them. So we're defining the rules, as you mentioned, those that can opt out of the Utah retirement system in lieu of the contribution that would go toward the defined benefit. This would be a defined contribution into it. So at that point, city manager, assistant city manager, finance director, which currently those two roles are held by the same person, police chief, public works director, water source director. Executives, sorry, executives.
Any questions?
I have a question. How many city employees do we have? Just curious.
Full time or including part-time?
Anyone that would be eligible for the Utah retirement system employee?
Thirty-four.
Okay, thirty-four. So I was reading through the law on this stuff, and I saw that only 10% of eligible employees can exempt from the Utah retirement system. On six people, there's a percentage. And I know that probably not all of them want to plan, but and then in addition, I have a concern, any Atwill employee. Cap, so I think we should, I think it would be a good idea to just rewrite this in a way that includes that sort of stuff in there, just. That's my thoughts based on what I've read in the state law regarding these things. Can you tell us where that's found? Yeah, it's in forty-nine, so Utah Code forty-nine dash thirteen dash two oh three, and then it's part, or part, four through seven, but yeah, part five is where it talks about specifically the 10% cap on eligible employees. It does say that each employer shall prepare and maintain a list designating those positions eligible for exemption under such section four seven. That might be some big, I commend your effort to put this together in a way that, you know, put it on paper.
At this point, all of those are vested, other than I think they'd be vested immediately for June.
Not for another year.
So all of those at this point have vested into retirement. I had in a previous position, I did exempt out, have not here, and have sufficient years to be vested in the retirement system, so I don't expect to make that choice again. Our public works director has nearly, I think he had nearly 20 years in, water source has over 10, and police chief has almost 20. At that point, I don't expect any of them to.
Okay.
Unless, unless John decides when he, when you're close to that, that he decides to exempt.
Correct.
I don't expect any of them to. We're just listing the ones that can.
Okay.
But we're not expecting any of them to take the election.
And so I think that in other cities, that is typical, Atwill or, yeah, Atwill employees are usually the people who are, in our city, we have a different situation, we have Atwill employees all around, so.
So the question I have is, if this defines who can.
State code would define it.
So then the parameters are, these are who can, but if we have up to 10% of these participating, then nobody else can opt out. Is that how that would work?
So if we have thirty-four, that means three can, three and a half.
Right.
So, and so if there are that many that are there, we wouldn't, the next ones wouldn't unless there's an opening to that option. The other option is to take some off so that you only have three listed, which could be the case. We could take public works and water source off, and then that would put us to three employees.
I don't think it's necessary, but if you put in there that no more than 10% of the eligible employees.
At any one time.
Yeah. Maybe just also put in there, any Atwill employee of the city can be exempted.
I like that thought process. I'd probably just recommend that we just put a code in accordance with state law, because those laws change all the time.
Right.
And that keeps us from changing laws and monitoring them. When that situation arises, you should review the state law, whatever the state laws at the time, that's what it is. That's what I would propose add into it.
Does that meet the requirements that you're trying to be putting this out there?
I think other parts of our, you know, we obviously have, all of our policies would be subordinate to state law.
Yeah.
So state law has that, any requirements would be subject to that. Return would be.
Now, this is.
That's definitely standard, is that anything inside our, maybe inside our policies.
Trump law, or state law, always Trump's local ordinance. But if you use language like Aaron's suggesting, rather than just staying in accordance with state law, I would say pursuant to Utah state code as amended, so that it's clear that you're anticipating there could be changes. Otherwise, there can be the argument that what you meant when you said pursuant state law is the law that was in at that time. But then it makes it clear that, because an argument could be made if local ordinances not in compliance with state law, but it just needs to be stricken. If you've used language saying as amended, then it's clear that it's contemplated that it would always automatically adopt whatever changes were in state code, and the ordinance would remain that way.
That's what I propose.
Would you reference that or just put?
I wouldn't reference the citation, just because if they ever renumber it, then it again opens up the argument, but since it's been renumbered, maybe that's not what was manned. I would just reference the entire code as amended, and then would be any provisions that are added, taken away from, or revised within the entire code that would apply to this.
And that's a good catch, so at least on our end, we know that not, no more than 10% of our eligible employees could. So that's good for us to know, but that's.
I may recommend that we come back with that change as a, as a not specific for this section, but as a specific for all of the policy, rather than, so my recommendation is approved this section as it is, and having adding, coming back and adding, if it's not there already, and I have to go back and check to see if it's not already there, that as a general rule, all of our policies and procedures manual is subject to.
Just made as a preference.
So that's in the, in the preference instead of.
The safety. There's a law with the city.
Yeah.
But that's.
That might be the other option, and it may be that I have to go back and revise it more down, I don't know that.
I'd recommend getting it more specifically in this one, rather than just having it overall.
Well, we can make, we can have a motion to approve with the amended. I mean, still.
Either whichever we go.
You can bring it, it's fine. Any other thoughts or discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve it with the mental language suggested by the attorney.
Have a motion by Councilman Wyatt.
Second.
Second by Councilman Labor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I don't see anybody with the wills. Do you have the will's petition?
I present the part of the law.
All right. Well, you should present the master site plan.
I don't have it. I'll have you do that. I don't have. Yes, so we actually. You receive a copy of the petition. You received a copy of the petition.
This is Rocky Chastain.
So the purpose is for you to decide, make a motion whether you.
Accept.
Accept the petition and authorize that he can, that the process proceed.
Which will then a public hearing will ensue and some other stuff. There was some language about, in emails, about possibly having him be more than one at a time. Well, what is that? Well, Johnny Wells owns, well, and I, just from what I gathered, he owns a lot of property right there, adjacent to this piece, and so we would love to have that in the city, but I don't know if you'd be agreeable.
He declined.
He declined?
He respected what he had.
Respect once.
Just to give, just to give you an idea, he has over 200 acres, over 200 acres, 240 acres in that spot. Question has come up, is what it may cost him, because there's not a water connection to these ones in water usage. At this point, our calculations doesn't count homeowner or connection fees or any other, this is just utilities and property tax. Comparing water, if they had city water and if he had the property tax effect, we did this calculation for all those south of 1,000 north, 2,000 north, anyway. So we were contemplating that. On those 200 acres, we're looking at potentially $400 a year if he were to annex those in, that probably would be his cost to be in, but one, one water connection, you know, he goes, he saves $2,000 for every city water connection if he would have paid for those. So anyway, that's kind of, was prepared if he, if he had a question of what it would be. So we have that by law and by question, so of all those that are, that have been that calculation. Most, as we indicated, most would actually save. So we have the amount that he would pay in city property taxes, so. So do you have an idea?
The discussion last council meeting was that if taxation came, would be granted?
Yes.
I think if that was the discussion, then even though we'd like to see 200 acres go with it.
Hey, one acre, one acre just started. 100 acres.
Are you ready for a motion?
If you've got a motion, we'll move forward on.
Got a motion by Councilman Wyatt. Wait.
I'll second it.
Councilman, second, second by Councilman Labor, all in favor?
I got it.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Greyhawk Loop update.
I think that's.
Blackburn? Are you here for the site plan?
I'm here for fun and games.
Well, you have the right place.
I thought I did.
Okay. We're just hoping that you might be associated with.
Nope, I'm the zingers, it gets it.
Well, join the crowd. All right, we'll tackle the Greyhawk, the Greyhawk Loop update, so this was, this was allowed on the, on the agenda with some contingencies, and first and foremost, it is just to have an update from our city manager, and also information and some advice from our city attorney. We have some things that we need to address. I feel some questions that are hung out there for both parties involved, that I think we need to answer once and for all and move forward, and so we'll allow, are you prepared, Ryan, to?
You know, I have three, three pieces of information. I'm prepared to either, if you want me to, or proceed, so.
You want to go first? Yeah, you want to go ahead and do your update.
What we've done as a staff, we've reviewed what issues are present and where things, we understand there's been some, some issues that have come up because of the construction. As we reviewed what had happened, we have three recommendations that we believe may make a better process. And this is broader than the Greyhawk, this is simply recommendations of what we believe. First of those is, our building permit, at this point, it's just been issued by our building inspector, and it kind of goes through a process. You know, a good double check on anything within joint controls or with anything, so you know, as we've talked, Dee and I have discussed that I would just help in a second review and in a second set of eyes, just to, just to kind of see if there's something that might be missed, just to help to, to pass through that way. At this point, I will work on that, maybe change that, maybe have another, whether our inspectors are part-time or something. We're not set on that. It's really a matter of having that second set of eyes to help to make sure that as things come, you know, we're looking at all the requirements and that. Along with that, you know, we've looked and we were looking at drafting a flow chart that can easily help in review processes we go, just to help improve our processes. So those are best recommend, number one. We would recommend as staff, I would recommend to the council, that we have training, and we either mandate or highly encourage, or however that be, that our planning zoning members take the annual training. This last year, we opened that up, we have opened it up, we haven't had great success for them attending those trainings. The Utah League of City Council puts that on, and it is put on and done, they broadcast it to various different USU facilities across the state. In fact, I've talked to them and have them so that they broadcast it here in Roseville, and they hadn't done that previously, but they have the last two years, they've broadcast it here in Roseville. It used to be that we lived in a little one, I think. I think that you have been with me best, and you've been with me the most, and we now have a broadcast here, and that was, I think, an improvement. But this last time, I was seven, planning zoning commission member, we only had one attend, and he didn't attend here. I was the only one that attended here myself, and one attended a different one to see whether it would be available. At that point, we need to help encourage the training of our zoning zoning, I believe.
How many trainings do they have a year?
Well, this is their, I mean, that's the one that I know of, and I think they have a hundred.
They have one a year. They have more trainings, but they have one a year in the area. Well, they scheduled another training, I guess, for another area, I don't know if we, or we could go to it, but it's just, it's just an area of six.
And they do have online training that people, that they can go to at any time, so they can go online and go through those trainings. But I think having a good world training planning zoning would be helpful, one on this process and two on other things, and better training, we can help them to be, the better help it is to offer questions of the kind. And so I think that that would, that would be helpful and could have been helpful in this process, so. The other one of number three, it would be helpful for, in my opinion, in staff's opinion, that as we proceed to a master plan, that if we can have and help organize the land use code or any of the code in a organized manner that it flows, flows well, so there isn't scattering requirements in different sections, that would be helpful, I think, both to the council, for planning zoning, as they, as they have turnover and things in the staff. We've had turnover the last three years, and there's been quite a bit of turnover in each one of those, in council, in planning zoning and staff in the last three years. If that was organized and done, I believe it could have helped to facilitate that. That is just to make things easier and better as a process, and so that would be the third recommendation that I would have. That would have been maybe looked at, I don't know whether it would, whether it would have changed things with the Greyhawk, but as we did a self-assessment, those are things we looked at and said, you know what, these are, these are what we think would have improved the process, and so from a staff perspective, that's the, that's the report we would have as we've done a self-assessment on the conservator. So anyway, that would be my report.
I'll just speak to that. The planning zoning you mentioned, I feel mostly responsible for that. I mean, we appoint them, I appoint them with the advising consent council, so I'll take that on. I would like to say or see something put in to when they are elected or appointed, that within the first year, they have to be trained as some type of training, and then at least each subsequent term, that first year they're trained, and then we may, you know.
There's a lot of law teams that come out from the state. I think you had a, if I'm not mistaken, they had over 1,000 bills. I'm not sure how many were in land use, but I know that the league of city and towns tracked, I think, over 200 or 300 of them. There's a lot of change that happens. It would be good for them to have.
Every year. Every year. So let's look at the ordinance.
It was only ten dollars for the training, so it didn't cost us much.
Wow.
So it wasn't a cost issue.
Let's, let's look at that and just make that a part of the responsibility. If they're going to accept the responsibility, that's part of the responsibility that they are accepting is to be to those trainings once a year.
And I think even we pay them as if they were at meetings, we pay them twenty-five dollars.
That's fine with me. So let's look at the ordinance, or whatever we need to do to put that language in there that they know, they have the knowledge. And when they come on board, that is an expectation and a requirement to be on the planning. Board. It's just to have that there. So I'll have follow-up with that and then I think I'll come to the next meeting and just explain it to them. Say, you know, within the, before the end of the year, there is a training, even if it's somewhere else, we can.
Twenty-one can do the top one. I mean, that was fine.
Yeah. We make that happen. So. Okay. Uh, any questions or comments for our city manager? Seeing them, um, I just had a couple of things that I wanted to, just questions in the back of my mind that I think, uh, again, it's fair for us to answer for the people involved. And Grant, if I start getting into an area where I get us in trouble, you just, okay, give me that. One of the things that I, I've thought about is the, um, current situation. We have two building permits that have been issued prior to us, uh, understanding what the ordinance was. That would have pushed that into a conditional use. We have another project up there, uh, that is the same, same scope that has not gotten the building permit yet. And how do we treat that? And then how do we treat all of them from here on out? Do we make everyone from here on out meet that ordinance where it's probably been missed for as long as we know? Or do we change the ordinance?
I understand that we came into orders to thirty percent is what you're talking about.
Correct.
Um, thirty percent of the structure.
That's what we're talking about. That's what everything's hinging on.
Before, prior to that, prior to that, I have a copy of the, of the code here. Um, but prior to that, it was fifty percent of the property. And, uh, it was updated in a broad, um, land use update code. So there, so there's not a specific ordinance or discussion related to that issue. It changed from fifty percent of the, of the property to thirty percent of the main dwelling. We also have in ordinance that there is based on the size of the property. But in conditions of the amount, so in R one ten, it would be thirty-five percent. So there's two.
How's the size of the property?
Of the size of the property, thirty-five percent of the size of the property. And the other one is thirty percent of the main dwelling. And, and at this point is our understanding that thirty percent was initially by Dean and I being new, which is all that. Um, and we are unaware that being enforced prior.
Okay. So I have the three things that I would like to address is, first of all, the current situation. Given the, given the information that we have, I've talked to Grant and I've talked to Dave Church. I've talked to, you know, several different entities. And the current situation, I look at it and say, we have three different options. Well, we have many options, but they can, can be categorized into three different options. And I think that we need to decide and, and whatever option we take, move forward with that. And that's what we do. The second thing is, is those that have not gotten a building permit yet, which would include Art, how do we treat that moving forward? And then the third thing is, is do we look at our ordinance and do we want to change that? Or do we feel like thirty percent is something that is good for our city? So the first one, the options that I see is to do just to move forward, to do nothing. Second option that I see is to have the city and both parties involved to try to figure out a remedy that would be satisfactory to all. The third option would be to not do that. I don't even want to say it. The third option would be to try to, uh, exercise the law and say, you know what? Uh, you'll have to come through the process and there could be a potential change. And then that would throw us into basically imminent litigation. And so those are our three options that I look at. To me, the second option of just the city and the property owners getting together and trying to figure that out is going to be best for all involved and hopefully would be, uh, something that would resolve even the emotional and, uh, personal issues that are over there. And so I, from the council's standpoint, um, once and for all, what, which direction do you feel would be most beneficial so that we can just move on?
I'll speak to the mayor. I think the third option, moving forward. From my perspective, I don't know if the councils ask for any yielding. Move forward on it. We move forward and then look at our ordinances in the future. I appreciate looking at and saying, how do we improve the process in the future? And that's, in my opinion, the right thing to do. Those folks that came and had their lot lines adjusted, had them adjusted, they went through the processes that he asked them to go through. But they're moving forward. And that's, in my opinion, the only, the right thing to do. We've, we've moved there. And then let's see how we can improve our processes in the future.
Yeah, you know, I, I have to speak to this too. You know, I'm, I'm very empathetic to both sides on this. And I think considering that the city hasn't enforced that law up till this point, it seems, um, seems like it's, the right thing to do is, is right now, um, now aware of those laws to, to to make sure we're following them. But at the same time, um, I can't, I don't think we could expect people who have already been through the process of invested money to go back and change, you know, things when we haven't done that in the past, anyone that's, that's broken that same law. So. I just think that's a fair and equitable thing to do in this case, but.
Those are my thoughts too. Okay. I don't know that we need to mention on that necessarily.
At, at this point, the staff's perspective is, is that we are proceeding as it's been approved and, and, and moving forward. And, and that we would move forward with, with the three that have gone through that process. Although the permit hasn't been issued, it's been applied for, is under, uh, review as a, as a planning review. We would continue in that same manner, uh, unless the council directs us otherwise. And so that's where we would proceed. So there, there wouldn't be, if you don't give a motion, the, the staff is going to proceed with those three in the same manner. If you want us to do something different, you would have to.
Well, I think.
Give us that, right.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt to have a motion to give the staff.
It's helpful if you find something different than that. So.
Go ahead, Councilman White.
I was just wondering, you said that there were, in, in the current color references, thirty percent of the living area of any outbuilding, uh, but determines the size. What, where did you find the thirty-five percent of the, the lot size?
So it is in, um, I have to find the exact font. Now.
That was on the old R one ten code.
No, there, there is, it's in ti- it's in chapter seventeen. Um, so it's in current code. It, it is related to the property rather than the, the primary building. So I know the other one is seventeen or that's the area. So there's no accessory building or group of accessory buildings. Any residential district shall cover an area larger than thirty percent of the main structure. And that was instituted in two thousand eleven. But there is another one that is, that is in the accessory building. I'll have to find it. But it's in a table and it will show based on, based on the R one ten, R one six, R one ten. Uh, it's in a table and will show based on the zoning, how much of the, of the area it can cover. So I believe in the R one six, it's fifty percent, um, and thirty-five. I'll find, I can find.
But I was just thinking in my mind, the, the buildings being built are probably way closer to the thirty-five percent of the lot size.
Well, it doesn't exceed that issue. We, we've measured that and gone back on none of those. Dean has, Dean has gone through and done that calculation and none of them exceed that of a mark over that.
What I look at too is, in my personal opinion, the thirty percent of the dwelling, the size and was never an, has never been the issue. It was never the issue. So to talk about whether we keep that or not, to me is not that big of a deal. Because it wasn't really that, that was the issue in the first place. And so if we do move forward with what Councilman Wade has proposed and we just follow, you know, follow the course uh, and we do allow part, uh, part to, uh, be grandfathered in, then at that point, I, I would have to ask, what do we do then after that? Do we have that thirty percent stay? In my mind, if we're going to allow part to do that, we should look at that thirty percent of the main dwelling and probably have that adjusted. It's never been followed enough.
I would bet that that thirty percent in that code was not something that the council thought of. That was probably a code borrowed from somewhere else. Now, we just, this is what they did, so now we get.
Well, and like I said, it's never, i- if we're not going to enforce it, then it shouldn't be brought.
I think, Bear, you know, the, the point you're talking to there of the ordinance, I think as we move forward and we look at the ordinance, I think it's a good thing to look at all of them that way because when you look at an ordinance like that, those are almost possible to trade them police all the time. So why do, why does any good ordinance want to have something that puts this tenuous stipulation out there that somebody's got to go try to make this determination? We have setbacks. We have those types of things that protect any lot. You know, that to me makes more sense. Because when I go, if I purchase a piece of property, I don't care what kind of a development I'm putting in, there are setbacks off the road, there are setbacks off the utilities. There are setbacks here. That makes sense if we follow those because there are good reason for that. Does it make sense that we want to get into the policing so to say of?
How big you.
You know, how big, how big the building is on the lot. If the lot holds it, the lot holds it. You know, I mean, that's how, that's how I look at it. So I think as we look at the ordinances, it's good for us to dive into those types of things and say, these make sense. You know, because the interesting thing, this is a little bit sidebar, but legislature pushes forward a thousand laws, usually our bills a year. They'll pass four hundred and fifty of them. The very next year, three hundred of them will be amendments to the bills that passed the previous year because they got things messy. So, I mean, it's just, that's the facts. That's the, it's just an interesting process. So when you look at laws and ordinances, when you're saying, yeah, it's my lawyer true. Too often they're said, let's stay busy. That sounds like a great idea. Well, well, it sounds like a great idea. Well, that girl maybe isn't a great idea.
The fact that we've, you know, in the, as long as we can remember.
We've talked to other builders, other that ordinance.
Other builders weren't, weren't.
So.
So what was it?
Can I speak for?
No. Sorry. And, and the reason is that we just want to keep it.
No, I was just going to say, nevermind.
I, I look at, I look at, you know, just annexed, um, totally. We've added fifty lots. Um, several of them have those. They have a, they have a small house, have over an acre, minimum of an acre. Um, and they have, they didn't have a twenty-four hundred square foot house. They want to build a thousand square foot building. Now that's more than thirty percent. Say we take somebody that has a nice house, a hundred square foot. Let's say it's four thousand square.
Four thousand.
So let's take that. You got over ten acres, how many? Fifty acres, twenty acres?
Forty something right now.
So at that point, forty acres, what's up harm in having buildings by a thousand square foot? But the law would apply all.
And that's what I'm meaning. To me, it's never been about that.
So, so size of lot is, is probably more, that, that rule, I would say should be enhanced and followed. We have followed that rule and it has followed, it was followed with Roger, it's been followed with Dean. It, it is, it is the rule in which it's being followed. The other one is not. And so.
And that's what I mean. If we, if we, if we're not following it and we're not going to enforce it, then let's get it changed. I mean, how do you feel, Grant?
No, I agree with you. If you're going to have a lot and follow it.
Right.
Well, where there's two, there are conflicting. And I'm not a decision maker. You guys are, I'll support it either way. But if there's two conflicting, one of them you like and want to follow and the other one you don't, then let's strike the one you don't. We need to put it back on your agenda, um, specifically for that purpose. But I think in my view of the code, if we keep the other one and you want to follow it, all we need to do is strike this one and nothing else changes.
And absolutely.
And then we talked about, um, really the problem of things comes down to something that we probably don't want to be involved with as much on a regular basis as the city. And that is telling people what they can and can't have in an area. That comes down to the restrictive covenants. And it is important, and it is government's goal to protect all. I get that. But one thing that I think we need to do in the future is look at how we, um, work with developers and property owners in the future to make sure that those things are encouraged.
We, we are working on, um, and that is to draft or at least have, um, sample, uh, CCARS, uh, sample restrictive covenants that a developer could, could pay block five. Would just be template kind of stuff that says, here is something that, uh, may affect the issues we've seen. It, it's yours to, to choose, but just as an assistance to the developer. Here is something that, that we've seen. Here are the last three that have been filed. Something, something to help to assist them and encourage them. But from the staff's perspective, we can only go to encouragement unless the council makes the, the action that's required. We would only go to the point that we could encourage and help facilitate it so that it's as easy as possible. And that's, that is one thing that we are critical of as well.
Do you have anything, Councilman Barrett? I know this was something that you wanted to discuss or wanted to at least.
The only thing that's been on my mind during this discussion is that, um, that thirty percent rule as, as much as it hasn't been followed and it's probably not necessary to keep it in the books. I think in a way that could have potentially prevented the situation we're in right now. If, if we would have known about that rule and, um, you know, it would have gone to the planning and zoning. I wish if they proved it, it could have been appealed. Neighborhoods that we don't like what, what plan is for that building there because it's, maybe it isn't size, but, but we don't like the look of it maybe, you know, and, and then at that point, um, we could have listened to their concerns and, and then acquired conditions of approval, you know, on that permit. So. In a way, I liked the lot for that reason, but, but where this isn't related to size, it doesn't seem like it's necessarily the right law to deal with that issue, you know, so.
And we, maybe we'll get that down the road. And I don't know what the solution is. I, I agree with you to a point and then, but I, again, I, I agree and I just don't know how comfortable I feel with government, the government coming in and making those decisions on, on that. In this situation, I, I had an, I have an opinion still and I feel strongly that way that we had an opportunity. And, and we could have taken that opportunity. And we don't need a conditional use necessarily to, to have those stipulations put on. Again, I've mentioned several different instances and with the city and with the county where I was just looking for a zone change and it wasn't a conditional use, but they made me do certain things. I was looking at building my home where I did and I didn't get a conditional use permit, but they made me do certain things and sign certain, certain paperwork and things like that. So I still think that we still have, uh, even without a conditional use procedure, or to turn it into a conditional use procedure, we still have the ability to, to put those things on as we, as we deem necessary. But, um, I don't know. I just feel like if we're not going to, to, um, execute and follow the current ordinance, then we shouldn't have it because it's just going to get us into trouble in the future when we try to.
Yes.
I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Wade about the setbacks. I mean, the whole issue, we kind of danced around it was, is the looks of the building. It, it thought would have been acceptable to the neighborhood. If, if that would have been acceptable to the neighborhood, the size made no difference there. And that's the concern, and so somehow, which was taken off the lots that were bought so that they could be sold, there were no restrictive covenants, is that, that's correct. And so that's what we need to look at in the future, is somehow that there's a review, that it's acceptable. It's not so much size, it's the appearance and, and how it affects everybody's life. Walking out and looking at it and doing so. I think we've, I think we move ahead and we do the setbacks and do the right things there and somehow have a way that, if there's a larger building being built or something in the neighborhood, that neighbors get to have a, a conversation about it. I think that's free America too, that's what we talk about doing. That's my feelings. I, it's big money. I had a great talk with Dean the other night for quite a while about this and, you know, they strive to do everything they were asked to do. It's just the perception of who's building it and who's seeing it or who owns it. We all look at things a little different and how it affects us. But we can do better in the future, that I, you know, that's my feelings. I appreciate that we can talk and do, I appreciate the monies that's invested into these homes and buildings, but it's still the aesthetics. I mean, we worked really hard on our building, whatever, and it, it looked a lot different to me than on paper, than it looked when we built our business building, you know, when it was set there and did that. I just hadn't, I didn't have the ability to think of the heights and stuff like that as much until it was done. You know, so somehow we've got to be able to have a better format of having what's something that's gonna be controversial to some, that we really can see the end project of what it's going by, and we can avoid some confrontations sometimes. So that's my feelings.
I agree, and I think when that, when it came to be approved, the lot line adjustment, it was assumed that without approval, the building would, was being approved with that. And, you know, that's maybe one of those things, and I, uh, take responsible responsibility for that. I could have had, should have had a copy of that plan and looked at it, so that if we were approving that, and that's what we thought we were approving, we had a good look at it, and everybody was educated on, it's, you know, educated on.
We can prevent things in the future.
Yeah.
We just, it's hard to go back and embrace what's been done.
Yeah, this one, I, my understanding is the restrictive covenants have not been followed, is my understanding.
Yeah.
So, I mean, going forward in the neighborhood, I know, they're under those, they're under that. And that, and that will work to control some of that. You know, if we, if we do a good job of restricted covenants and help that, encourage that, help the developers, I think that will go on.
And the other, I, I would like to entertain a motion that we give the, a staff, a solid answer to move on and ease everybody's mind in the future.
Motion to move forward.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Okay, there you go.
Read that, that was you now.
That was you now. Any opposed?
No.
Um, good deal. I don't see you with the paper.
No.
Are you with staff chat? You're just with him to enjoy it.
For ten times. So you have one.
I just didn't want to have anything special from you, but you have.
No, I just, I was just, wasn't saying, you just said we're worried about house values and why would we want to limit somebody the size of their garage or shop if it can increase their value of their property? And there's a ton of properties in this. I drove around and logged every one of them, and there's a ton of them that are way exceed that thirty percent, and it's never been implemented, and I haven't been researched, I haven't been enforced. So I just think, I don't think we want to get into the, I mean, obviously you guys make the decision, but why would we want to tell somebody to limit the size of their garage or their property, which is gonna increase the value of their home and increase the property taxes and value that the city's gonna get in return? You know, I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't understand.
Yeah, it, it comes down to, again, the size is irrelevant.
Yeah.
It really is, and so that thirty percent, wasn't it?
Exactly, so we should just.
Some restrictions.
There's other things that we need to.
It's fire and CCNRs. So that's why the setbacks is because.
Fire access and.
Well, and that's why I said.
But setbacks. The true, uh, future resolution is, is not the size, because that's not gonna solve this particular issue. It's, it's how we, how do we enforce or how do we encourage CCNRs and, and those types of things. And then the other thing that property owners need to be aware of, and it's something that I'm, I've been aware of because of some real estate background. And that is, when I go in to purchase a piece of property somewhere, that's one of the first things I look at, is the CCNRs. Just that I know what I can and can't do. And the main reason is, is so I can protect my home value. So education is, is key, and not only for the developer, but the homeowner.
All right. Just so you're aware, our bonding agency, we've already, we've already gone through the agenda items, she, she was late. Um, if there are questions, we only pass the resolution. But if there were questions or you had questions, she is here.
Sorry, I was like.
They didn't have many then, if they may have some now.
Yeah. Just so you're aware of who she is and why she's here.
Great.
Appreciate those from Greyhawk and Subdivision being here, very much. And your involvement, and sorry there's been so much contention and feelings. Hopefully we can all be more forgiving, understanding.
Agreed, and I just want to make sure that, I mean, it's sad, it's, it's just been a black eye kind of, just the, the community, we need to get over it, we need to treat each other well. I know there's frustrations, but we don't want it to become a bigger issue than it is, so. Um, moving on, we'll just go ahead and, and our next item is closed session. Um, we have a couple of things, um, with litigation and, and I don't know as much about litigation anymore, but we do have some things on property matters, and so.
The field's been passed down.
You know, we got right here. Actually, before we go into closed session, let's do that, and we'll do the reports, so that anybody that wants to hear the reports can hear those before we do that, and that'll be our last thing, and we'll go on.
I have a second. You need to be, are you looking for a motion?
Uh, no, let's go ahead and do our reports real quick, so that, that way we're not going back into open session after our closed session. So, uh.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Let's just sort of.
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks. Second by Councilman Wade, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, okay. Um, do you have anything for us tonight, Councilman Wade? Councilman Wade? Councilman Barrett?
No.
Um, trying to think how many things that's been involved with, we may need to renew it, but probably not any city ones. Other than, um, October is coming up, we have the shooting range, still trying to get that going. Uh, we did do some redlining to the Economic Development Committee, I met with Councilman Wade. And we did tweak a few things, uh, I met with Councilman Barrett, and we also looked at maybe expanding some definitions on a few things, but not really changing the structure of it. But we'll give that to you, and I'd like to have that, um, on our agenda for the next council meeting. So I don't think there's, has anybody else had any reservations or questions about the, the resolution to, um, enact the Economic Development Committee? Okay. If you do, just get with me, and we'll try to have that draft finalized by next, uh, Tuesday, so that we can get it on the, the agenda. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, I guess. If you just give me what you've got, it won't take me very long to.
Okay, that's all I have, Councilman Wade.
I think we just need to send out a great big thank you, Chad Hornson of the committee for the work at U B I C. They do a unbelievable job every year, and every, every year I'm amazed. As you know, I listen to the concert in my front yard, so I was even more amazed. But I think it would be nice to send them out a thank you, perhaps, if it's appropriate, give them a, give certificate down to the grill or something for dinner and just, just express our gratitude. That's a lot of work with absolutely nothing but the applause and thanks of the crowd that they get, so.
There weren't a lot of loads, but there were a lot of entries, that's gotta be about the largest thing I've seen.
Entries ninety-three, I think, ninety-six. It is an hour and a half long, but I think there were ninety-three or ninety-six entries, so.
That's all I have.
Thank you for bringing that up, and yeah, that's, those were my thoughts. Looking at U B I C and looking through everything, and seeing that through a little bit different eyes versus just going and enjoying. It was, uh, it's amazing what those guys do. You know, one thing I didn't mention is the police department.
They need to be the law enforcement.
Yeah, covering all the streets and everything else, and just standing up there in a mason and doing that. If you could just pass it along, pass that along as well, so.
All night.
Uh, City Manager, or Ryan, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, just a couple of items, we're proceeding on our sidewalks, uh, up in the northeast, if you haven't been up there. Um, there, they, we've got a lot of those sidewalks installed, um, and, you know, it's still under construction, and so it is not perfect putback, but we are doing a, a good job, the contractors make great progress there. We do have a few, uh, light poles that we'll need to move, um, or have moved, we don't have to do that stuff. Um, and, uh, we have a few things, we're waiting for Strata to move their, um, boxes. And, uh, by that point, the amount of sidewalks that they're putting already has been great. Uh, that one will get a lot safer for those kids. Um, it's been great, um, to have worked with the principal and school district on, working on, on that plan. Um, and so that will continue to make progress. Um, so if you have a chance to go up there, I want to encourage you to bring a little look. You can kind of tell which one of the new sidewalks are. And just a slight different color as you, as you see, you've seen it, so. Um, we're excited about how that's proceeding. What's happening?
So they probably don't have any cracks.
They don't see any cracks, they, they don't, they don't, but it's, you know, it's that slight green, real bright white kind of lip tone that you can tell. Anyway, um, the, uh, other things, um, we, uh, on Public Works, uh, on the A hundred South, we finished the water line and made sure lines, we're working the ladders at this point. Um, and, uh, just kind of, uh, you know, we've got a lot of questions about, uh, water usage and secondary water. Um, we are still on track to, to continue to have water throughout October fifteenth, um, which is our normal. And, uh, so we're, we're really on track there. Um, and, uh, we're tracking well in the victory at this point. Um, so we're doing well on water. Um, the gas plant was a success, for those that, um, John Stockton's son, I don't remember his name, it was Dave. Dave Stockton came out and, uh, did that, we had a couple hundred, uh, for that one, so it was a great, was it the, the big high school, was that where? Nice, it was good. Um, so we're, uh, we're continuing the area, um, and it's been popping, so. I'm believing you, Peter, for me, I'm happy to.
Couldn't make that a big enough, there, a lot, I don't know, there's an open house on the new high school on the fifteenth, the Wednesday, from five to seven at night, which is pretty amazing school.
Yeah. So they haven't gone through it, it's, it's great, that's, it's a good hour and a half to walk through.
It's a little different. And the old one is pretty much now, from what they're taking now, then it became a lot bigger job than they had anticipated, you know, to the developments.
Wow. I'd sure like that probably for commercial real estate for Roosevelt City. It'd be much better than having it school district property, just to swallow enough tax dollars.
But just like to share, Mr. Manager, all we have on the education community, myself, U B Tech, Utah State School District, thank you for getting our city repairing the waterway on fifteen hundred. That's made a big difference, fifteen hundred and Green Street, and that affects everybody. Appreciate that, so.
The city did do that? I think, I think this is fantastic improvement. That's the gutter southeast of the football field, the power, highway, the adventure that's always been broken up and crumbling, it's now been replaced.
It's a rainbow show for the last three years, so.
It's nice. Would have been really nice if we didn't have somebody to track right on our new, um, chips, so. We'll, we'll go into that, to all the state of Utah. So anyway, no, no issues there. We're happy that we were able to, to do that, it looks good all of them through the future.
Anything else?
I, I don't, I, I do want to appreciate, thank you. I was on vacation last week, I walked with my staff, I appreciate that, and the council's patience to understand my, my family does like to be able to, to see me in their own smile, I did take that opportunity, honestly.
John did a good job, he had our coffee in the mirror, so we could throw it. I mean, it was good, and why, I mean, those guys do a good job, just.
At least we have a good staff.
Great. Okay, well, thank you for being here. Like I said, we do have, uh, an item to go to discuss in the closed session. Um, go ahead, any thing to motion unless.
Well, I'm just curious, do we have to, to make mention of what it is required?
Yeah, it's a, so it's, um, so it's property acquisition is, is what we're looking at, so.
I'd make that motion on the closed session.
Well, and you make the motion to go in and then come out, right? Is that accurate? So.
Yeah.
To go in and then come out of a closed session. We have a motion by Councilman Barrett.
Second.
By Councilman Wade, I'm in favor.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, roll call. Starting with Dave, how do you vote?
To go, have the roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Dustin?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
All right.